Okay, good evening. I'm Cheryl Scully, City Manager. We welcome you here this evening to our budget hearing. We actually have two going on tonight, and I'm glad I'm here with you in District 7. But we welcome everyone from the West Side, so thank you for joining us this evening. We use the input that we receive from these budget meetings to help us finalize budget recommendations for the city council's consideration. So thank you for making the time to be here. And I'm looking around the room, and I see several of you have come to our meetings in the past, so we appreciate that very much. As we get started, let me introduce our newest council member, and she was elected and appointed unanimously by the city council just today. And so she's been a city council member now for just about six and a half hours. Mari Aguirre Rodriguez, our newest council member representing District 7.[57.03][57.03](APPLAUSE). You know that Mari is from this neighborhood. We first met when she worked with Mayor Phil Hardberger. We met during the weekend of Hurricane Katrina, and we worked together for about a year and a half. And she has a wonderful background, having worked with Rackspace and founded and put together through their Community Affairs Department the first Rackspace Foundation, and of course was the founder, founding director, executive director of Gentax, and has quite a background in education and business, and now is her own small business owner. And we're just delighted that she is our new council member. I'm going to hand her the microphone to say a few words this evening, and then we'll get started with our budget activities for tonight. Councilwoman?
Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight. I know it's 6:30, 7 o'clock on a Thursday evening, and for me, it's been quite the whirlwind. Cheryl's right, this has been five and a half hours on the job, so it's been an overwhelming day. I've hardly talked to my husband, and he's been wanting to chatter at me all day, but it's been, you know, I've been pretty overwhelmed with just trying to keep up with everything. As many of you know, Councilmember Medina will be back October 10th. I plan on taking good care of the seat until then, but in that time, I really, I'm excited about going through a budget process. I know that sounds a little nerdy, but I'm excited about going through a budget process where we can affect change and work together as a community. So I'm going to pay close attention this evening and walk to all of your tables to listen to what you've got to say, both about the district but also citywide. I really want to know the challenges that you're facing, and this for me, again, is a lot of learning, so I want to make sure that I'm taking away a lot of great information that I can use beginning tomorrow. And if you're part of a neighborhood association or a neighborhood association leader, know that in the next, well, now I'm down to nine days, frankly, I made a pledge that I would meet with all of you in the next 10 days. So begin to look for those emails or calls, because I do want to reach out to you, and I want to understand even more deeply the issues of your community and your area. So I'm very excited, excited to hear and meet all of you. I like having new friends, so don't be shy, come and approach me, and I'll come and approach you. Looking forward to serving the residents of District 7.[194.73][194.73](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, as we get started tonight, let me introduce and talk with you for a moment about the staff that are here. Both of our chiefs are here tonight, our Police Chief Bill McManus and our Fire Chief Charles Hood are standing right over here to my left. And at each of your tables, okay, go ahead and applaud for our chiefs.[217.15][217.15](APPLAUSE). We have staff at each of the tables to help facilitate the conversation this evening and to take your input. And what we received this evening, we will share with all of the council members so that they hear from all parts of the city as to what you would like to see incorporated into the 2015 budget. Our budget year begins October 1 and ends September 30, so we are required by law to maintain a balanced budget. It's balanced today. The proposed budget is also balanced, and we manage that very carefully throughout the year to make sure that the revenues support our expenses that reflect the council's priorities and, of course, the community's priorities. So what we want to do is show you a quick video. It's only about six minutes in length, and it summarizes the proposed budget and what's included in terms of projects and priorities of the city council and the community. And then I have a couple of additional slides that will clarify a few points about the budget. And then Brian Layton, where's Brian? Brian, over here to my left, is the Assistant Budget Director, and he'll give you some very specific instructions on what we'll ask you to do in your table conversations this evening. Okay, does that work, some like a good plan? Our goal is to wrap this up by about 8:15 so that everyone can get on their way, 8 o'clock or 8:15. We started a few minutes late tonight, but this is our biggest crowd so far. So thank you, District 7, for coming out and joining us this evening. So let's roll the video, and then we have a couple of slides before we get to our table
The city of San Antonio's fiscal year 2015 proposed budget provides recommendations for making it easier to get around, becoming healthier, more educated, and providing affordable public safety. The city's $2.4 billion proposed budget is a reflection of what is most important to the community. The proposed budget is balanced as required by law, includes no increase to the city's property tax rate for the 22nd year in a row, increases the street maintenance budget significantly, and strikes a balance among the community's many priorities, does not include layoffs for uniform or civilian employees. These are priorities that you shared with us during the five community budget meetings held in May. More than 400 people attended and worked in small groups to identify the cuts that they would make, as well as to add funding to an existing service. Following these community meetings, the city council held a day-long goal-setting session and together agreed on the following budget priorities. To increase funding for streets and drainage. Develop a multi-year plan to improve and acquire more parks. Enhance the city's investment in education, including more library services and adult literacy programs. Maintain and strengthen public safety without crowding out other services like streets, libraries, parks, and human services. Enhance animal care, code enforcement, and other programs to improve neighborhoods. Keep the economic development toolbox equipped to attract new companies and jobs to San Antonio. Fund and complete a comprehensive plan for the city, including policies related to transportation, water, air quality, and public spaces. Public safety is by far the largest expense in the city's budget. Two out of every three general fund tax dollars are spent on fire and police protection. The fastest-growing driver of public safety costs is the health care benefits the city provides for uniformed employees. Health care for uniformed employees costs the city nearly double what it costs for civilian employees. In the city's recent community survey conducted by an outside pollster, 70% of respondents said they want to see uniformed health care benefits brought more in alignment with civilian health care benefits. The fiscal year 2015 proposed budget makes changes to health care benefits for firefighters and police officers, saving the city millions of dollars while still continuing to cover 100% of on-the-job injuries and offering better health care benefits than those provided to city civilian employees and better than those offered in other Texas cities. This follows the council's direction to ensure that public safety does not exceed more than 66% of the city's general fund budget. By maintaining affordable public safety costs, the city can invest in other priorities. The proposed budget adds an additional $21.8 million for neighborhood street maintenance and drainage projects to the current $52 million in the infrastructure management program that is used for the continuous maintenance of San Antonio infrastructure. It will grow the infrastructure maintenance program by nearly 30%, which will significantly increase the number of roads fixed this year. It adds funding for the maintenance and operation of a new library, two new senior centers, and new parks projects approved by voters in the 2012 bond program. It funds the hiring of two city veterinarians to conduct spay neuter surgeries to keep the city's live release rate of stray animals at 80%. It provides resources for a new program to regulate vacant buildings throughout our city. And finally, it funds a code enforcement case management system to close cases faster and more transparently. The fiscal year 2015 proposed budget does not include an increased stormwater fee. Instead, the city will review a new stormwater rate method and make recommendations to the city council and the community in the 2015 calendar year. The budget also does not include any funding for Vias Streetcar project. There are a few fee increases, including an increase in the fee for being transported by EMS and a $1 increase in solid waste fees for garbage collection. So there you have it, the fiscal year 2015 proposed budget, balanced, no tax rate increase, addresses the community's top priorities by keeping public safety costs affordable, and does not include any layoffs for uniform or civilian employees. The city budget is the most important policy document the city council will consider in any given year, and before the council considers adopting it on September 18th, we want to hear from you. There will be five community budget meetings held across the city and two public hearings at the city council chambers. You can learn more at the city's website, www.santonio.gov.[635.82][635.82](MUSIC PLAYING).
Okay, so a couple of comments about the, what's included in the proposed budget. You notice that it said that we are recommending an increase, could we turn the lights up just a little bit? That we are recommending an increase in our street maintenance budget. That is the number-one thing that we hear from the community, that and drainage. How many of you want to see drainage, continued drainage improvements for the West Side? So of the $7 million that we're recommending in this budget to increase the drainage budget, about half of that is for the West Side of San Antonio and specifically projects here within District 7. So we're going to keep going with the drainage improvements in the community. I know that they're painful with all the construction, but we know that flooding prevention is very important, and so we're going to continue with that, and we've recommended some additional projects in this budget. Couple of other things, I have a couple of slides to show you, and the cost of public safety health care, there's been a lot of conversation, so let me explain a little bit more about what we're talking about. About a year ago, the mayor and council appointed a task force to examine pension and health care expenses for uniform as well as for civilian employees. And that was composed of representatives of our employees, active employees, civilian and uniform, as well as retirees. The unions were represented, and half of the committee included business leaders who work in the field of pensions and health care. So we had subject matter experts and then employees who were affected and who received the benefits. That task force worked over the course of several months, had numerous meetings, and spent about 30 hours in meetings studying the issues, and came up with a series of recommendations. Now, as was shown on the chart, public safety represents 2/3 of the general fund, and those expenses are growing faster than our general fund revenues. And what happens then is those budgets increase, we have to cut elsewhere, because we're required by law to maintain a balanced budget. So those cuts have to come from all those other departments shown here in 1/3 of the circle, and that includes everything else we do, street maintenance, parks and recreation, our health department, animal care services, code enforcement, the libraries, municipal court, the administration of the city in terms of our human resources department in finance and accounting. So all of those other things fit into that 1/3. And over the past five years, public safety has grown by more than 10% as a percentage of the general fund. One of the major cost drivers is health care, and so what we're asking is that the employees contribute toward the cost of health care. Today, uniform employees don't pay any premiums, have very low out-of-pocket and low deductibles, and so their expense is very limited. We know that the costs of health care have escalated for everyone. Health care expenses are very high, so what we're asking them to do is contribute, similar to what our civilian employees pay about 30% of the total cost of health care. So with their premiums, their deductibles, their out-of-pocket, our civilian employees pay about 30% of the total expense for health care in a year. Our public safety employees only pay about 9%, and the national average is that employees contribute 43% of total health care expense. So we're trying to more closely align our civilian and uniform health care costs, and you can see in other cities, they are more closely aligned. We spend the most per employee for uniform health care. Last year, it was about $13,000 as compared to $7,000 per civilian employee, and you can see in the other cities, they have similar, they spend similar amounts for uniform and civilian employees. Here's the amount, and what I've included in the proposed budget is something in the middle, something better for the uniform employees, but having them contribute more toward their cost of health care than they do today so that we can control our costs as a city. And with this, and maintaining their budgets at 66%, not letting it become a larger percentage of the general fund, we're able to redirect those dollars into the services that you have identified as being most important. Street maintenance, drainage improvements, human services for the community, those who need them the most, not reducing our library hours, making sure that we can continue to maintain our parks and expand our park system. This year, we're adding 123 acres of parks with projects that have been approved by the voters, so we need to be able to maintain those parks and keep them in great shape. Here is total compensation, just to give you an idea. Our uniform personnel are very important to the city. It's part of our core service, and we're grateful for the work that they do, and they are compensated for the work that they do in their chosen profession. Here you see a police officer, and we're ranked number two on this chart. San Antonio was just under the city of Austin and not by much, and here, our firefighters are tied for number one with Austin in terms of total compensation. So we pay our employees well for their work, and what we're asking as part of this budget and in our union negotiations is that they contribute toward the cost of health care so that we can maintain and keep our expenses for public safety affordable to the taxpayers. So that's it. The budget is structurally presented to you in a balanced way, and there are so many priorities, and I know that we all have different ideas as to how we should be spending the monies, and the information that we receive from you tonight, as I said, will be used as we formulate the finalization of the budget. Budget adoption will be on September 18th. The city council is required by charter to adopt the budget before the end of September, and our new fiscal year begins October 1. So Brian, come on up. Brian's going to give you some instructions, and before we begin, could I ask each of our city staff at each table just to stand and be recognized, and the other staff in the room just to wave? Let us know that you're here. These are department heads and assistant department heads of the city that are here tonight to help facilitate the conversation so that we can work with you to gather your input. Brian?
...out there that they are going to be discussing, do you have news for us of the $32 million that was going to use?
Okay, okay. So she asked about monies for Streetcar. There are no dollars included in the proposed budget for Streetcar, number one. Number two, the city council has not decided how to spend those dollars in the future. And I want to explain to you, it's not as if there's $32 million in a pot being wait, we're waiting to spend it, but rather, this is capacity for us to issue debt service in the future. And so those dollars could be used for more street improvements, for any type of capital project in the future, but the council has not decided that yet, and so we would, we would welcome your input on the use of those dollars for the future. You're welcome to comment on that. Okay, Brian, let's, a few instructions.
Okay, so you've heard a little bit more about the budget. We need your input now. At each table, like Cheryl said, we have a director, assistant director, that will help take notes, and they will also help answer any questions you might have. So we need two things from you. First is, we'd like to hear three priorities that you have in the budget that you've seen that we've added, that you want to see stay the same, that you want to see continue. For example, the additional $15 million for street maintenance. If that's important to you, please let us know, mark that down. So three things that are important to you, that you'd like to see remain unchanged in the budget. Also, part two, we'd like to hear from you up to three areas that you'd like to see change, we'd like to see added or different. So as Cheryl said, the budget is balanced, so if you'd like to see an addition someplace, we also would like to hear any ideas you have for where to reduce from another area. So three things you'd like to see stay the same, and up to three things that you'd like to see changed or added. At the end of the discussion, a resident from the table will share with the group what your table has decided, and we, budget staff is here, we're compiling all the answers. We'll compile from all the meetings and share with city council next week. You can also share your thoughts and ideas with city council directly at the community budget hearings, the citywide hearings, and those are at 6:00 PM at city council chambers on August 20th and September 10th. And we also have the hearings for delegate agency funding on August 19th and August 26th, and those are at 6:00 PM as well. So go ahead and get started. We have about a half hour for this exercise, and we'll be around to answer any questions you might have, so go ahead.
I'm Martha Reyna. I'm an intern with Nowcast SA.
Hi, I'm Mari Aguirre Rodriguez, and I'm the interim city councilwoman for District 7.
How long have you been the temporary councilwoman for District 7?
This is six hours on the job right now.
And how long is the term?
It's 60 days roughly until October 10th.
So what are you, what are the most important issues to you?
So right now, I'm very concerned about infrastructure, streets, drainage, all of the issues that affect all of our residents as we drive to work, drive to school. I'm also very concerned about education, all of our parks and our libraries, there's so many in District 7. I'm interested in going to visit all of them and making sure they all meet the needs of our residents.
And how can people learn about the budget possible?
There's lots of ways. One of the ways was tonight, they can come to a budget hearing. We're going to have two additional ones. One in city council chambers actually coming up very soon, next week, August 20th, and residents can come here, and they can also come share with their thinking and their concerns in their neighborhoods.
And what are you looking forward to the most in these two months?
That's a great question, and you know, no one's asked me that yet. You know, I'm excited to learn. This is so interesting to make, so many new friends, to reconnect with so many people. I had a baby a year ago, and I really focused on my family and on starting my new business in the past year, so I'm really excited to get kind of back out there and meet people and re-engage with old friends.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lack of expenditure, but it's part of the budget, too. So our first was streets and infrastructure. Everybody's got their pothole in their neighborhood that they have a name for. We have parks, pretty much everybody's experiencing really positive things about the walking paths, and the parks are just beautiful, they're just great. And we want to make sure there's no tax increase, and that's part of the budget, too. So then we pick something to increase or change. We wanted to make sure the victims advocacy here, okay, was increased in their funding in maintaining those positions that are proposed to be cut. We wanted to add funds to job training, particularly Quest, which is doing great things in the health care industry. And to fund it, we want to reduce the city attorneys, we need to make a little bit better decisions, and stay out of courts, courts are bad. And we wanted to reduce it by $4 million, and we think that the $4 million probably would adequately fund those two things, and that's what we got at Table 3. Thank you.[1405.01][1405.01](APPLAUSE).
Okay, so just so you know, on the victims advocacy unit, there are no recommended cuts in the budget for victims advocacy, and someone said maybe increase, which will take that recommendation, but there are no recommendations in the budget to reduce the victims advocacy unit. And there is no property tax rate increase recommended in the budget. We, as a city, have not done that for 22 years, there's no tax rate increase recommended in the budget either. But there are increases in the budget for spending on street maintenance, so that's consistent. Okay, which table would like to go next? Okay, right here. Do we have table numbers tonight? I guess I, table number one, okay.
Okay. So we'd like first, the Westside Development Corporation and Sage to be reduced. We'd like to increase and keep the victims advocacy unit in SAPD as an increase. Total compensation for uniform police to increase. Uniform contribution to health care should match civilian decrease. And then the other one? Then civilian contribution to health care should match uniform and increase, and then $1 million to Haven for Hope Prospects Courtyard Security should be reduced.
Okay, thank you.[1498.01][1498.01](APPLAUSE). All right, next table, all right?
We also went, of course, with the pothole, streets, and drainage, and one of the things that, on the police, whoever lives right and round the area here, we had asked the police that we wanted patrolling, because there's a lot of burglaries, there's a lot of, and their hub station is way over there at Ingram, so we never see them patrolling. So guess what they gave us, because I, I addressed it here in a town meeting, and we got radar. There's a difference between radar, Chief McManus, and patrolling. So we need to have more patrols around here, and also, we need to get, the community needs to, let's start having meetings on crime prevention, and we can do it. We've done it before, and we can do it again. So those are one of the things that, and the code compliance, code compliance, there needs to be a better process. There's a lot of problems in that area. They come and they give us their, what their problems are, and they really are not working with the community to see what we can do about it, and then they fine people, and then we have to go to hearings and all of that. So it needs to be a better process. And if you're going to be giving fines, especially for the dogs, we have a lot of problems with the roaming of the dogs. So we're going to be getting fined and going to the, to the court. We need to have a process where we see, we have meetings with the departments before we go, and before they find us, and that's what you call due process. Okay, and the other one is economic development. And of course, in there, we, I think in District 7, we do fine with economic development, but of course, there's always a need, and also have better funding. There was a long time ago, they did some funding for economic development on Freddysburg Road, and of course, it's my fault, I never went to meetings, but, but, you know how much they paid for those palm trees? $50,000 for all those palm trees they put. We have to be careful about those things, because they're all dead, they didn't water them. So, so we need to be at those meetings for economic development, and I'm for it. More jobs, more services, and I'm for it. In fact, the police has an empty office, and they need to use it. And that, of course, the seniors, and that's my priority. I work with the seniors all the time, every day, every week. You know, they closed seven nutrition centers in the West Side, and because the churches wanted more money, and the city wouldn't give them any more money. So we need to find ways to fund them. They want them to go to, and it's great, there's two centers that are coming in for District 7, and you know where they are? In Fort Tan. You think they're going to get to go over there? They just spread in the centers that we already have in the community. This is not right. We need to organize for other entities that can sponsor those centers other than Wynn Med. WellMed is doing a great job, but we have other, other medical places that'll say, if you want a center in there, and you just find the place, we'll fund it, and that's the University Hospital. And that's it. And, uh, that's it.
Thank, thank you so much. That was, that was extensive. All right, next.
Our proposal would be to keep streets and drainage, vic, uh, keep victim services, keep economic competitiveness, increase property taxes, decrease tax abatements, especially big biz. Thank you.
Very succinct. Okay, next, Linda, all right?
My goodness, it seems like this year, we've had a lot of shy people, uh, because it's hard to find someone who will speak. This group had a lot of ideas, we definitely had their priorities. We also want to maintain streets and drainage, the libraries, and the victims advocacy program, they wanted to keep that in the budget. I know that it has been included, but we wanted to make sure that y'all knew, we think it's a great program. And for our changes, uh, we want to fund social services, including Project Quest, because everybody needs a job. And we also want some changes on, uh, animal care services, and we want better lighting. I understand that on the bike trails, a lot of times, uh, they don't have the proper lighting, and they want nice streets so that they can roam around their neighborhood and enjoy the great outdoors of San Antonio. That's it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. All right, Edward, your table, okay.
Ours is short and sweet. So we supported the increase for, uh, streets, drainage, and sidewalks. We also support the increase for the library and for the adult literature education that would go on inside that lib, the new libraries. Also, the increase for animal care services, um, that would be the two new veterinarians and the support programs, there's a new pilot program we learned about that's kicking off too. And then we also put the senior center support that would be ongoing. We talked about District Seven, so we live in Seven, and our senior center's opening, but that's already been funded in the 2014 budget, so it's, that's why it's not on the 2015 as an increase. And then changes, we couldn't really agree, the only thing we agreed on was a tax increase for the hotel motel tax, but we had a lot of discussion about those pieces, and that's the only page we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. All right, next table, who, okay, in, in the back corner, and then we'll work back around this way, all right?
Directly into the mic, okay. Um, I'm representing our table, and it is primarily comprised of the Jefferson Neighborhood Association. Um, the three things that we want to stay the same are public, police, fire budget to stay as is and capped at 66%. Continue to fund domestic violence programs, sales tax to stay the same. Changes, uh, public safety deductibles to be more in keeping with civilian employees deductibles. Increase street infrastructure to include curbs, alleys, street lamps, and sidewalks. My family, um, has been living in the area where we, we currently live, and, um, since 1957, we have not had new streets, curbs, sidewalks, and we do not have an operational alley. We need that. Um, uh, full disclosure of all commercial, high-end property tax evaluation, uh, to, go to state legislation. Does that make sense? Okay.
Good. Thank you. All right, Paula's table back there, all right?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Lamb, and I live just about two minutes from here, so that is why I brought my bike, if you're wondering whose bike that is. Uh, I just kind of felt bad about driving, you know, uh, since it's one block away. Um, anyhow, our group is, in regards to maintain, maintaining and continuing, continuing, uh, facilities or improvements, we thought about street maintenance, which I think has been mentioned before, drainage resources, of course, we know we get a lot of the flooding that comes from the north down to the Woodlawn Lake, um, and a lot of us who live in this area love and really enjoy that lake, and that's actually one of the closest parks in this area to be able to drive to. We would like to support and continue to pay for family members' health cares, but not the officer, not officers. I, I think that was what the police, that was articulated, uh, since you mentioned, uh, it was very expensive, but it's expensive all around, so we all know that. Uh, we also would like to continue to maintain the victims advocacy program, and I think that was mentioned as well. Uh, library services, we want to continue that, we want the revenues to stay. Obviously, this is more than three, um, so we already have broken the rules, but, um, perhaps we can prioritize it a little bit. In, in regards to changing or adding, um, uh, my proposal, personal proposal, was to increase the bike lane that goes from St. Cloud and Donaldson here all the way to Fredericksburg, just because we have the Jefferson Terrace business there, we have the new, uh, Via Bus, the double bus decker, I guess it's called, that goes through Fredericksburg. And we have a lot of students and people who ride their bikes up and down Donaldson. Uh, the, another suggestion would be to increase funding for crosswalks, and particularly the Five Points area here, that has already generated some, uh, city planning suggestions. I actually have three suggestions, um, and, uh, Councilman Medina's office was looking to see if he could find more funding at the end of this year, so I was hoping he would be here so I can beg him for money. For, um, a crosswalk that is, it is located right here near this school and two bus stops, and there's no crosswalks, no lights, and students and parents have to run across this area. And it's a different kind of, uh, road system, you know, it's an older neighborhood, so it's, it is a Five Points, uh, area. Another change or addition is to increase curb sidewalk funding, I think someone in this table mentioned that. And my neighbor actually asked me to advocate for solar streetlights, um, so she's a very eco-friendly person, and she thought perhaps that would save the city money, so that's a good thing, to incorporate streetlights in our neighborhood, um, that are, that are solar, I don't know how costly that would be, or if that would save you money in the end, but that was a suggestion. Thank you. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, there was, there was more, um, one of the ideas that, that I had suggested to the Maverick Music Festival is similar to the Austin City Limits Music Festival, where part of the proceeds go to maintain their parks. The gentleman didn't call me back, but someone just alerted me to the, the, the budget input box. And we would increase revenue to the animal care services by perhaps collaborating with the Maverick Music Festival, um, they would be win-win. Part of the revenues would go for monies to the city to help us out with animal care services, and perhaps in exchange, he could get some tax incentives, a venue or something, and I'm sure, uh, he would more than likely get more sponsorship from dog-related companies if they knew that he was funding a cause for animals. And I know a lot of dog lovers would purchase more tickets if part of the revenue that he was gonna be generating would be going to a good cause. So that was another suggestion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, that was great, all right. We appreciate it. Did you want, okay, we, right here, and then we'll, we'll come right there, they're, they jumped up ahead of you. You're next, though.
Okay, my name's Rick, I live on East Quill. We came up with, uh, three items that we want unchanged, and, uh, there were no particular order also. Uh, the first one was, of course, the uniform benefits, we want them to stay the same. They deserve what they got, they've bargained for it, and they've earned it. Uh, number two, social services, spe, uh, with particular significance is the domestic violence program. We've got some people at our table that are very interested in keeping that, and, uh, that's something that we need in the society and the community as a whole. And, uh, the services to seniors, we want to keep everything that they get, they need that. Uh, our population is getting a lot older, we're gonna be there one day, and we want something there when we get there, also. Priorities that we want changed, again, no particular order, uh, they want to eliminate the executive bonuses for the city. Uh, no more bonuses for executive staff. Number two, got pretty quiet there. Uh, number two was increased transparency in the city department's spending. And number three, offset the funds, uh, for street repair with some of the money that was going to streetcar. If we can find it for streetcar, we can find it for, for, uh, street repair. Uh, another untapped source is Via. Via themselves have so much money, they can help in repairing the streets that they help damage also. And that's about all we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm representing, um, Table Seven, which is so funny, 'cause it's District Seven. My name is Vanessa, um, we've just moved into the company, I mean, the neighborhood, me and my husband, um, we've been here for two years, so this is my first time, never done this. Um, our three priorities to keep the same were street maintenance, which kind of umbrellas under like the streets, um, street, uh, sidewalks, streetlights, um, anything pertaining to, you know, everyday movement that goes through there, through the neighborhood. Um, another one is safety, um, to keep, uh, again, uh, streetlights, a $3 million budget, right? Is that correct? And then, um, code enforcement, which means abandoned houses, um, tall weeds, overgrown yards, and graffiti. Ours, we kind of did different, our three things to stay the same, we kind of also put things to umbrella under that that can be improved also. So our things to be improved for our three priorities are, um, let's see, for code enforcement, um, when we make a call, it's, it seems like nowadays, you just make the call, somebody comes in, nothing really gets done, and then you have to make the call again in another couple of months. So it's pretty good, I mean, if they have the same houses that are being, um, not enforced on correctly, um, maybe they should just keep on top of those people and those homeowners. And then also, um, for the parks, like, I guess within the neighborhood, um, to kind of beautify them better, I know they're working on the drainage around Woodlawn and the sidewalks and the streets, but also to update the tennis courts, I know they just did the playground and the basketball court, but the landscaping, um, too, should be an option, and I know not everything can be done so soon, but it would be really nice for them to keep on top of that, and also the small little parks that we have in the neighborhood, um, people tend to forget about them, there's one located by Longfellow, and I know people have started planting trees and plants and everything, but it's kind of good to keep on top of that because then, you know, if you don't want to go to a busy park, then you have those families that just want that kind of, you know, um, quietness and just really serene for their kids. And then also, um, for the safety, we also put police under there to have them, um, maybe patrol a little bit more. Um, in our day and age, I mean, times are getting a little crazy now with, you know, different people moving in from different areas, um, it'd just be nice if the police could make a little bit more of a presence. Um, I know I gave an example, um, all summer long, I passed through the same street every day on my way to work. During the school year, you see the cops there, you see them at the corner, you see them driving around early in the mornings, all summer long, I have not seen a single cop. And to me, that's the best time for you to make more patrols around the neighborhood, because that's when kids are more vulnerable to be doing things that they're not supposed to be doing. Um, and then also to reduce the executive wages, that was one thing mentioned, and that's it.
All right, thank you for your input. Josie, your, has your table gone? Yeah?
My name's Alejandro Soto. First of all, we want to keep, uh, current support on street infrastructure and parks maintenance. Parks, as you're increasing the acreage, you're spreading out the maintenance patrol and all that, uh, with the same personnel, and that, that has to, uh, that has to increase. We also want additional funding for streets, curbs, and sidewalks, and animal control. Animal control, again, uh, I guess that, that's a real common issue. I live at Woodlawn Lake Park, which is like, probably the dog dumping ground of the city. We need, we need more, but more patrol and enforcement. What other ideas? We talked about tax increase, and we said even though there's not a tax increase rate, your appraisals go up, so your taxes go up, until you reach that golden age like I do, and you can just kind of keep the same rate. Uh, we've talked about, uh, maybe, and some smart growth inside Loop 410, increased aerial density, we have some major streets, Fredericksburg, Banda, uh, things that can be developed with proper planning. Safety improvements for neighborhoods, patrols, lighting, uh, school zones, protected bike lanes, and planning for multi-modal transportation. One possible cut that I mentioned is the council members discretionary funds, a lot of times these end up being, seems to be more like vanity projects for themselves. If it's city-funded, let the city fund it, and don't put a councilman's name on it, and that's what we have.
All right, thank you. Did we miss any tables? No? Okay. Well, we've been true to our word, it's just a few minutes after eight o'clock, and we appreciate everyone coming this evening to give us input. As I said, we gather up all of these comments, and we share them with all of the council members. We conduct these meetings throughout the city, and we'll share the information with the entire city council. We appreciate your being here tonight, so on behalf of the mayor and council, thank you for coming, thank you for your input. We have public hearings coming up in August and September, and budget adoption is on September 18th. Have a good evening.